I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, 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 everyone. At first, first matter is the, we had an executive session prior to our meeting tonight where we discussed some personnel matters. I also wanted to get the board's agreement to move the BIA property up to the top of the agenda so we can discuss that ahead of time. Is that all right with everyone?
Sure.
Agreed.
All right, so we have presentations?
Nothing at this time.
Any public comments on agenda items? Nothing? Okay, announcements. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, December 16th, at 7:00 PM. November is National Veterans and Military Families Month. The Doylestown Township Administration Office will be closed on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th, in observance to Thanksgiving holiday. We are looking for a few resident volunteers to fill some anticipated vacancies in some of our committees, boards, and commissions for the new year. We have openings in the Bike and Hike Committee, the Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation, the Finance Committee, the Human Relations Commission, Veterans Advisory Committee, Friends of Kids Castle, Historical Architecture Review Board, and Agricultural Security Area Advisory Council. If you're interested, please send a letter of interest and a resume to the township at 425 Wells Road in Doylestown, 18901, and check out our website at doylestownpa.org for more information on various boards and commissions and their roles in the township. Chapman Road Bridge will undergo repairs beginning October 27th, with work expected to be completed by June 30th, 2026. During this period, Chapman Road will be closed to all traffic 24 hours a day. A full detour will be in place directing motorists to use Pine Run Road to Lime Kiln Road and Ferry Road. Visit the township website for updates. Also, keep up to date with township news and events. Sign up for our e-newsletter at doylestownpa.org. E-newsletters are sent out every Friday at 4:00 PM. So the minutes approval, we'll do that first. The budget work session, has everybody had an opportunity to review that?
Yep.
I move for the approval of the budget work session meetings.
I just wanted to state, I did not, I thank you for noting that I did not agree about moving the budget forward, but it was because, and it's not listed, and that's fine, but because I didn't feel we should have a salary, or sorry, excuse me, a tax increase at all with the $1.5 million surplus. I just, it's not documented, I just wanted to state it for the record.
All right, so I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the regular meeting minutes, has everybody had an opportunity to read those?
I did, and there's an amendment there. There's no notice of who was in attendance at the meeting.
Okay.
It has to be added to the minutes.
I believe that was, was that adjusted?
Yeah. Margaret adjusted it for the final copy that we'll have.
Okay, sorry, I don't have that.
No, I mean, we, I think she's amending it.
It is to be adjusted.
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, with that, with that addition or revision, I would move for the approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. I wasn't here. Thanks.
All right, so we will move on. So we'll be moving the BIA conditional use application to this segment of the agenda. It appears that we're looking for a continuance.
Yes. Excuse me, this is, this matter was scheduled for a conditional use hearing this evening. The property address is 1850 Turk Road, Doylestown Township, Tax Map Parcel Number 09017012002. Yesterday, we received a letter from the applicant's attorney, Kelly McGowan, asking this, this matter be continued from this evening's agenda to a date certain of the board's next meeting, which is going to be on Tuesday, December 16th, 2025, and they have granted all continuances and waivers necessary under the municipality's planning code through and until December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents, River Crossing YMCA of Doylestown is looking for a waiver of land development. Stephanie, do you have any information on that?
Yes, they have a covered basketball, outdoor basketball area, and they've had it with sort of a fabric, unframed fabric. They're taking that down and they want to cover it with a pole barn building, so their courts are more year-round indoor. And we've, we're not seeing any additional stormwater, it's already impervious, so they're going to be working with the code department on the proper building permits, grading, and erosion, but we just wanted to make sure from the board's standpoint that we officially waive any land development that they really don't need to go through, but we wanted to make sure we had our i's dotted and t's crossed.
So moved.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Sure.
Do, will the township incur any costs for waiving the fees at all?
No, there are no costs.
Okay, thank you.
We'll actually get building permit fees and everything associated with it.
Okay, we still get that, thank you.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, St. Paul Lutheran Church is looking for a waiver of permit fees for signage. I believe it was something like $80?
Yeah, and this is special event.
Yeah, it's temporary, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Judy, Judy, you're the second tonight.
Yeah, always a second.
Always a second. Yep, never first.
Oh.
You can be first, Judy.
I'm just not fast enough.
All right, solicitor, anything?
No report this evening.
Okay, township engineer?
No report.
All right, chief?
Yes, good evening. In your packets, there are two resolutions for a grant that we're going to be applying for, that it's due in November 30th. Just a little background, we have a grant that we had submitted in November of '24, and it still has not been decided. Today was the meeting was scheduled, they pushed it off until January. So that is why there's two resolutions here, it's more of a contingency plan for us. One is, includes a patrol vehicle that's fully equipped to handle a drone with special compartments and a power supply in there, as well as the police radios that we had submitted in 2024. Should we get the award for the grant that is still outstanding in, for the police radios, then we will not need to submit that grant, we will only submit the grant through the DCED for the police vehicle with the drone equipment in it. So the resolutions here are just allowing, are requesting authorization for myself and Stephanie Mason to sign all paperwork related to the grant for processing.
All right.
So moved for both resolutions.
I do have a question regarding the drone. What exactly is the capability of that? Are we talking like a little, just a camera kind of thing, or is it to bounce signals off of?
No, this drone is about $17,000. What it does is it has heat-seeking cameras in it, it has zoom cameras that'll probably go pretty far, that you could read almost 1,000 feet away a license plate in a parking lot. It has a lot of other things, it's got a spotlight with it, it's got a speaker, it's more use that we, that we built it out, that we can use it for search and rescue operations. We can use it inside our park systems.
That's great.
It's just, the technology is incredible. There's also attachments on it that we can get that, for night vision, it has obstacle avoidance and uses AI, so that if we can't really see it, because at night, the drone will know that there's an object in the way, and it'll move itself out of the way to go around the object.
That's great.
So it's, it's pretty, pretty intense.
Do we have any code or policies we follow about drone usage in such a case for our police department?
Not for the police department. We have used them for accident reconstruction through the county team, and we have used them on occasion for other emergency events that we had, were difficult to get police officers close enough to a property to check something out safely, we have used drones in the past for that.
So is this within the budget of the department, or is?
No, this is a fully funded grant. It will not cost the township anything if we get awarded the grant.
Can we quote you on that?
Yes.
I appreciate you leading the way, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Director of Operations?
Good evening. My first item is New Britain Road Trail, Road Trail Construction, A.H. Cornell and Sons Change Order Number Three. This item actually is a credit to the contract amount. Just a reminder, this is part of a DCED grant that we're doing this project under, and basically the credit is for some pavement markings, actually, that we're going to change on the bridge deck on New Britain Road, some bollards and guide rail end treatments. So the credit is $4,495 as Change Order Number Three for A.H. Cornell, I'm asking for the board's acceptance of that change order, please.
I move for the acceptance of the credit of $4,495.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the Community Recreation Center, Miller Sports Construction, Change Order Number Two. This is going to be an acknowledgement by the board, as I outlined in my memo in October, when Miller Sports started working on the sport courts, we were out there and they brought up to us that the walkway kind of areas that are the non-playing areas in the courts, the walkways between weren't sealed. I liken it to sealing your driveway, and they, the rest of the areas are, so they basically recommended that we do that. I basically reached out to supervisors, Harrion and Lyons, and asked for approval on 10/22, and on 10/23, we got both approvals from the supervisors. So this is just an acknowledgement by the board that the Change Order Number Two for Miller Sports Construction totaling $4,750 was authorized in accordance with our change order policies and procedures for the project, so I'm just asking for the board's acknowledgement of that.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thus, thus, the credit becomes, sorry, $5.
Yeah.
Dave, I just wanted to know what?
You separate projects.
I know.
Yes.
What's the lifespan of the paving for something like that? Like, of the court as well as like the walkway? Are they, are they similar?
Well, again, the pavement, the pavement is similar to a parking lot, so I'm going to assume with that it's about, what, you know, about 20 years, but again, if it's sealed properly and maintained, it's probably about the 20, 25 years, I would say is, you know, but it's, the sealing is the important part and making sure they stay sealed.
Okay, and, and for the record, anyone watching, the courts, you're close to putting the fencing up and lights, is that correct?
Lights are done, there's some electrical work being done, the court color coat is done, we're waiting for fence to be installed, they were prepping today for paving the trails and doing dirt work around the, the courts, so we're, and they were working on the bocce courts, so we're, we're hopefully weeks, couple weeks out, we're being wrapped up here before it gets really cold, yeah, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That's it?
Thanks.
All right, Assistant Township Manager?
Nothing to report tonight.
All right, Township Manager?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Supervisors, Nancy?
Yeah, just wanted to acknowledge the veterans' dedication on Friday. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend, but I thought that was a great opportunity, I thank the township, Stephanie, Chris, Jess, and Geth, Jen, for your words. I think that was a great message to send to our community, so thank you for that. As far as the budget and voting on that tonight, I just would say, my concern really is something I think everyone's talking about is affordability, and I think it's something that the township supervisors are rolling off in December, but really need to be mindful of the affordability issue. We had a house full of people back in October '23 talking about it, and we need to continue to be mindful of that, and some of the policies that are coming through, I think, I don't think it's right to continue to hold people's hard-earned dollars to have a rainy day fund in that percentage, so we can talk about it once the policy comes, but that's just my feeling on it. I'd rather, I just really think we need to be super mindful of that and really, really just remember the affordability, the reason everybody wants to live here and be part of Doylestown is because of those things, and we want to be able to allow people to age in place, so that's just all I really wanted to say.
Judy?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I was in attendance at the Township Bike Safety and Trail Etiquette Program that Sergeant Jared Quartz put on, he did a fabulous job, it was very informative, and it talked a lot about bike safety and using the trails and keeping yourselves safe and being safe around others if you're on a, on a bike. And we talked about the ordinance that is looking to be adopted at the Bike Hike Committee meeting this morning, we're excited to have something put in place so that the, the police can enforce, anybody who might invite, be in any kind of violations that's being dangerous on the hike and, on, on the hike and bike trails. The Bike and Hike Committee also talked about Phase One of the Greenway Trail, which is going to be crossing at Alms House Road and 611, which is right there at Giant, so this is a county, a county system, the Greenway Trail, and it's, it's going to be interesting to see how they navigate the crossing at such a busy intersection, at Route 611. The Bike Hike Committee also discussed potential expansion of the Pine Run Trail and looking at an easement for the county and the Pine Run community, they would be the only two property owners that would need to sign on to that in order to have this trail go through, and again, this is a project that would be coming in the future, but just kind of cluing the, the rest of the board in on what they're talking about. In regards to the EAC, they met last week, and sadly, Heidi Schreiber is going to be stepping down as chair, so hopefully a new chair will be nominated and voted on at the December meeting. The EAC will have a kids' fun project for December 13th, when Santa and Mrs. Claus come to Doylestown Township, so we can look forward to that. And that's my report.
All right, Dan?
Yeah, I don't really have anything for planning, we're meeting tomorrow night instead of our usual end of last Monday of the month, because of the holidays and such. Beyond that, thanks to the staff and our Veterans Advisory Committee for putting together the Blue and Gold Star Traffic Circle dedications, and then the last thing I have with the holidays coming up, I've seen during the period of the government shutdown, there was a lot of outpouring of support for food aid for those who are food insecure, and just to ask that, the people who were doing donations for that, please consider, if you can, continuing to donate to your local food shelters, because even before the government shut down, there was a severe issue with food insecurity in our area, and unfortunately for some people, it may end up getting worse, so try to help out our community where we can there.
Barbara?
Yeah, I have two things. Stephanie and I attended the DART meeting last Friday, and it's a quarterly meeting of local municipalities and Bucks County Transit Authority that runs the DART, and I want to report on the tremendous success of this, of this, this machine, I mean, they, we have, there's Doylestown DART, DART West, DART South, and the Courthouse DART, and then 2025, they've, they, they ran thirty, over 30,000 individuals through the Courthouse, 2,400 through DART South, which is new, DART South, DART West is also new, and they ran 10,000, 11,000, and the DART, no, that was DART, and then the DART West was 3,300, so up from every indicator from last year and the year before continues to grow. So I think, you know, it's what a great resource, dollar a ride each way. And then the other thing is, the TAB, our Telecommunications Advisory Board, working with staff and Karen's group, put together a video that showcases our new Community Rec Center and other park improvements, and we are ready, it went through a couple edits, both the copy and the filming, we're ready to go, Ed, run it.
The wait is over. Come see the new Community Recreation Center, permanent restrooms and sport courts. Our park is better than ever, a vibrant, accessible, and first-class destination for everyone. Inside the Community Rec Center, you'll discover a welcoming lobby that leads to a large, multipurpose room that can subdivide into smaller rooms, perfect for meetings, parties, and programs, and a warming kitchen to serve Rec Center special events, and a full-size gym. Whether you're interested in basketball, fitness and yoga classes, crafting, or community gatherings, there's always something happening inside. Step outside and explore the new sport courts, basketball, tennis, bocce, and pickleball. With open play, tournaments, pickup games, and instructional workshops, the courts will be a lively hub for staying active and having fun. Planning a celebration or event? Rent one of our flexible indoor spaces, ideal for wedding receptions and baby showers, and community events of all kinds. Programs for toddlers, teens, young adults, and families, like summer day camps and parents' night out, and of course, the always popular canine classes. Teens and young adults will find plenty of ways to connect through instructional programs, fun activities, social gatherings, and sporting events. Adults and seniors can take advantage of dedicated spaces offering engaging social opportunities. Take a course in landscaping, cooking, crafting, and more. Play games like mahjong, pinochle, bridge, and more. Central Park is more than just new amenities. It's an open invitation to play, learn, engage, and explore. These exciting additions reflect our commitment to creating a warm and welcoming environment for everyone, where community comes alive and where friendships and memories are made. Come, connect, create, and grow with us at our new and improved Central Park. Check us out at the new red-accented building off Wells Road. Here's where you can find out more. Hope to see you soon.
Great job. That's great. Is that the entirety? You have anything else to add?
Oh, hell, that's wonderful, that's a good way to put it.
Yeah, that building is, is remarkable. I see it being used all the time right now, all the cars parked out front.
People lined up when we pulled up tonight.
Yeah? Yeah.
There's activities there now. Karen's over there.
Yeah. So for my report, I met with the Human Relations Committee, and we had a, we had a very interesting discussion about some opportunities for the next year, what we're looking to do as a committee, bringing different celebrations, ways to bring the community together, educational opportunities, and so I'll be bringing that information to the board when it gets a little bit more solidified. As mentioned earlier, we had a dedication of our two roundabouts in the township to Blue Star and Gold Star families. The event was, it was a beautiful event, it was a cold day, but it was really remarkable. We had representatives from both Blue Star and Gold Star families there, including former Township Supervisor Ryan Mannion, representing our Gold Star families, we had State Rep. Tim Brennan there, State Senator Steve Santisaro, both of who helped move that through the legislature. We had our Veterans Advisory Committee, who, they were the ones that came up with this idea and brought it to the board, and we are grateful for the opportunity to recognize the Blue Star and Gold Star families in our township in that way. So every time you go through those roundabouts, look for the little signs, we have versions of them in the back of the room right now to demonstrate what they look like, but next to the roundabouts, you'll see those as well. It was a wonderful event, and I want to thank, thank my fellow supervisors for coming out, Barbara Lyons and, and Dan Wood, for coming out to, to support the event as well. And Supervisor Wood mentioned the food insecurity, the township is currently collecting food products right now for, for food banks, so if you do have anything that you'd like to donate, you can always bring it in here, and we'll collect it and make sure it gets distributed. And that's the entirety of my.
Can I add one more thing to your announcement? Judge Barry McAndrews is being honored and also marshaled through by Senator Santisaro and Representative Brennan, a naming of the Ferry Road and 313 area for, for his memory and his honor. Judge McAndrews was a long-serving judge in the Court of Common Pleas, Bucks County, and the ceremony will be 10 o'clock in the, in the, in the big room at the Justice Center.
Thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda, I think we're jumping to Highland Farm Extension of Time Request.
Yes, I believe Representatives, Mr. Peters is here, and Representatives from the Hammerstein Museum are also here to ask and talk about that extension.
Hi, my name is Mike Peters. I am a land use and municipal attorney, but I'm also on the board of the museum. You received a letter from me requesting the extension. The project dates back to 2014, when Christine Cole, the prior owner, first came into the township for a special exception. That ended, as I'm sure you're, you're all aware, in a settlement agreement in 2016. In December of 2020, we obtained preliminary and final land development approval. I don't need to tell you what was going on at that time, fundraising was extremely difficult during COVID, but in December of 2023, we did close on Highland Farm, so it is now owned by the museum. Since that time, we've been working diligently to continue to fundraise, we have received two significant RACB grants, as well as significant private donation. We're confident that the project is going to move forward, we've met with contractors to perform the site work, we will need to work with your township staff because significant time has gone by, so we'll have to do updated proposed costs, but we're willing to do all of that, we just need a bit more time to work through the process. So in my request, I put in that we understand you may want to do it for only a one-year basis, we could probably use more time, but we have no problem coming back to report to you the same time next year on our progress, and hope we have some really exciting things to report. So our request is for an extension of the time periods under the municipality's planning code to let us keep moving forward with the project.
But you want two years, right?
I said one in the request. We'd love two years to give us a little bit more time.
I would make that motion.
For two years?
Hmm?
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Saying that will mean that you're going to get it done well within two years.
Yes, ma'am.
We're taking away.
I know, I know you're watching it closely, as am I, I live on Pemberton Lane, so I'm right around the corner too, so thank you very much for your time.
We're neighbors.
I know. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And if I may be excused, please?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Jen.
I don't know if we've ever had somebody ask to be excused before.
All right, next on the agenda, what we've all been waiting for, the Preliminary 2026 Budget.
Well, as the board knows, we had over four budget work sessions, and I think there's, yep, there it is, we have some information, just kind of a quick summary of the Preliminary 26 Budget. As we indicated, '25 looks to be, as though we'll end with about 1.2 million better than we budgeted, so we're in a strong position at the moment, based on our EIT and transfer taxes and some hiring delays. The overall 2026 budget has 17.9 million in operational revenue, there is a quarter mil increase, kind of staying with inflation there, 17.1 mil in operational expenses, 7.7 in capital expenses, and 1.9 in capital revenue. And we have results for a positive 800,000 in net operational income as well. Next, we have just some pie charts that show our comparison of our '25 and '26 revenues and where our funds come from, as we can see, earned income tax. As we can see, earned income tax, our real estate transfers, and of course, all of our state grants and transfers and state liquid fuels, as well as other sources of income. Our expenditures, we show a comparison here with two pie charts again that show our personnel costs, as well as our general expenses coming along with fringes for our personnel, and then water that comes through on our Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, our public works and admin comparisons from year to year. We have a chart that provides information on our millage. I know that when the board has to consider a tax increase, you examine all the fund balances and you look at all the projects. Currently, one mil is worth about $281,707. We went over this quite extensively throughout the budget meetings that we had. Our millage rates come from general fund, our ambulance, our fire tax, park and recreation, our debt service, and our roads and bridges. And in '26, we'll have 22.1 mils in total. Here's a comparison of other municipalities. Obviously, several are starting to announce their tax increases for the coming year as well, but this is mostly '25 with our '26 kind of in the red up top with the proposed increase. And we will update that in the new year once our comparisons are completed. But as you can see, we trend kind of in the middle. You know, even with an increase, we're still kind of in the middle. Our capital projects for '26 include areas to complete Central Park improvements, of course, our road maintenance, which is very important, traffic projects, bridge maintenance, and areas of public safety, new trails, basin maintenance, totaling about 7.6 in capital improvements for '26. And overall, just the conclusion for the budget is that '26 budget, I think, shows the townships maintaining and expanding our municipal services, focusing on public safety, public works, administration, parks, recreation, our water services, and while all maintaining financial stability for the community. And that is pretty much the budget in a nutshell. We will have it, if the board authorizes the hanging of the budget this evening, we will have copies available here at the township. We will also have it posted on the township website, and an ad will be placed in the newspaper. We also have the Budget in Brief, as we've been preparing the last few years, and copies are available of the Budget in Brief for all those can take that as well. It's a good synopsis.
I move that we hang the budget for 2026. Do we have to approve the 2025?
No, it's all part of the, it's in the budget document.
Okay, then I move for the approval, I mean, move for the hanging of the 2026 budget.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the Rainy Day Fund policy.
I think this is smart. I read through it. I think it's good. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. The Finance Department would like to propose that we adopt an official budget stabilization policy, also known as Rainy Day Fund. That would help protect us against emergencies such as revenue shortfalls, natural disasters, public safety crises. Also, the GFOA, in their experience, they've noticed that when it comes to natural disasters, that it takes around 18 months on average for local municipalities to receive emergency funds. And over the last month, it's a month and a half, we've been going over a risk assessment with the GFOA, and they've recommended that we have a required reserve of 16.7% of total expenditures through the general fund. And this is actually the lowest bucket that they recommend, which pretty much means the Doylestown Township has very low risk. We also recommend that the official balances be between 15 to 25%. This will pretty much help make a clear floor and a clear ceiling of what the fund balance should be. We also went through and surveyed a couple of local municipalities here. And as you can see, the only municipality that's pretty much lower than the recommendation from the GFOA is the Borough, and they're around 10% of the general fund expenses. The average between all these municipalities is around 18%. So Doylestown Township would be 16.7. That's the same as Warrington Township, and pretty much in line with everybody else.
Okay.
Just wondering if you guys have any questions I can answer?
How did you get up to the 25% number?
The 25, that was recommended from the GFOA. I suggested between 15 and 20. They said it'd be more efficient to use 25.
Okay. And my other question is, under the conditions for use, emergencies makes perfect sense to have that. The revenue shortfalls, walk me through that. It says when actual revenues fall short of projections by more than 5%, and no reasonable budget adjustments can close the gap.
Let me more, say if like earned income taxes or something happens, say if, I'm not sure if AI would affect people's jobs in the future, but say if something happened with people's jobs, we're not getting earned income, we don't have revenues to sustain operations, something like that.
Right.
It'd obviously be decided with the board to make the decision.
Yeah, I just, and then the other one was extraordinary one-time costs that cover significant non-recurring expenditures, advance the township's long-term interest. I mean, I appreciate that they're sort of vague. I'm concerned more about the revenue shortfall, that it can be a safety net for when we're doing budgeting, because that, I know it's supposed to be a rainy day fund, but it's still there. And I just think the 25% is high personally.
Honestly, we don't consider, think that it would ever get to that level. The investments are made into CDs, which are low-risk and pretty much low yield. The percentage chance that we would actually get to 25% is very low. So that's why we actually don't, didn't have any verbiage in there of if it reaches 25 or anything like that, but we don't expect it to ever reach that.
Right. I mean, I guess what it comes down to, as I started to imply, is the affordability that we're putting this money, I'd rather it be in people's pockets and sitting in this, gaining interest in case we need it, but I just, that's really my concern. But I appreciate, I understand the resources that you used to get to these numbers. There's just, that's just my thoughts about the policy in general. I think it's a good idea, seeing how FEMA is being gutted, and if we had some kind of emergency in Doylestown Township, we're going to need this money, because there's not going to be any rescue from the federal's assistance programs. Agreed.
I agree. I think it's important that we do it, too. Does it affect the budget that we're looking at at all in terms of...
No, right now, ending at 2025, we're about 15.2% in the Rainy Day Fund of general fund expenses, which is right in that range.
Right, okay. So we'd be looking to build that up somehow?
I think it'd be fine at 15.2. It's within the range, just...
We just keep it there?
Exactly, yeah.
And I was going to add, this pretty much just codifies what we've been doing, to an extent, with more official language, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And more, doing more.
Yep.
Well, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2763, establishing budget stabilization policy, also known as the Rainy Day Fund.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the e-bike ordinance, and...
I moved to table.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second it then.
What's the reason for tabling exactly?
Yeah, that's, we just talk about that a little bit.
It's not ready for primetime.
I think that there are some elements that we, upon looking at it, that might need to be changed as far as some of the wording. There's some minor changes in it as well. I think they were updated already, some just wording. Now, as far as like the discussion part of this, we can discuss it, any issues that we have with it in general, but I think that, I think the actual wording of the document needs to be updated. But I believe that it's important to have an e-bike ordinance, and I believe in the spirit of it. I think there's just some massaging that we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice just to discuss it, anything in specific.
Yeah.
Here, I mean, or I don't know if there's anything in specific that needs to be brought up. I think we could talk about it.
The intent of the ordinance is there.
Right.
But it's worded in such a way that it could be construed as ambiguous or inconsistent or conflicting. So it just needs some language cleanup.
So more of a legalese type of...
More of a language, not legal. The worst thing anyone could do is write legalese, you know, because it's confusing. So this is just some basic...
Just some clarification.
Clarification.
Okay, so couldn't we talk about like next steps so that...
Right, so I think we're going to be...
I pointed out some things I had to do, Jen, who shared it, will share it with the solicitor.
Yeah, so we can...
Yeah, so we can...
We'll just, we'll clean it up and get it polished and ready for consideration next month.
Okay, great.
Right.
And I appreciate that you, that it's going to go for it. I know the chief has been looking for it. I know that the Bike Hike Committee's, you know, it's a good time of year to take our time on it, right?
Right.
Because it's, people are not out on their bikes in this cold weather so much. So, but yeah, so this is a good time to get it right.
Yeah, we just want to slow down and take a deeper look at it and make sure that we get all the, all of everything straight and make sure it's right, because I hate to bring it back for corrections later if we wanted to correct or update. So we'll just move that to a future meeting.
I moved to table, it needs a second.
Okay, I need a, oh, I seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. All right, so the investment policy statement of...
This is just an acknowledgement. Engelbert Financial Advisors works with some of our staff on their 457, and they've provided an approach to their performance measurements, and they just want us to acknowledge that we're aware of their kind of procedures and everything when it comes to their investment policy statement.
Okay, acknowledged. Zoning Hearing Board.
Yes, you have a couple zoning hearing board applications this evening. The first one is the Dona Room property on Turkey Lane. They're seeking variances for reduced side yard setbacks. I would leave that matter to the zoning hearing board. And also the Roskowski on Pebble Hill Road, again, requesting a variance for the reduced front yard setback, and would leave that to the zoning hearing board as well.
All right.
Treasurers Report?
Move for the approval of the Treasurers Report for October 21, 2025.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bills List?
I think that's November.
Oh.
Is that a correct, I just wanted to catch that. Yes, it's November 18. I'm sorry.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, you're right. It didn't make, November.
November. Okay, I move for the approval of the Bills List for November 21, 2025.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comment? I don't see any. All right. And... Move for adjournment. All right.
Documents to be signed.
I'll second. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Done.